Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' public meeting for Thursday, November 7, 2024. The time is now 7:17. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 7, 2023, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Present.
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracco and Mayor Kelly are absent, excuse us this evening.
And just for the record, I am Deputy Mayor and Governor of the Finance Committee here, and I'm filling in for the mayor this evening, which happens, you know, once every four years. Let me have my moment. For the minutes, please.
Thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for October 1, 2024, and October 15, 2024.
Move it.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes. Thank you. We have two this evening. The first one is Michael Chiefo has submitted an event application for his annual holiday toy drive event scheduled for December 14, 2024, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. The event will be held at 38 Gerard Road. Our second one is our Lady Mount Carmel Church has submitted a letter requesting permission to hold raffles on Sunday, July 20, 2025, at 1 p.m. at 120 Prospect Street. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Since I don't sit here, I get tutoring on the microphone. We now have a proclamation for this evening, which I asked Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Scarpelli to join me in reading the proclamation, which is as follows. This proclamation declares October 16, 2024, the 100th anniversary of the founding of Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. We declare this day of remembrance to honor 100 years of service and faithful witness to the Nutley community and beyond. Whereas on October 16, 2024, Reverend James Berg and 30 charter members started Holy Trinity Lutheran Church.
Whereas the first worship services and Sunday school classes were held in the Nutley Masonic Hall or in the Nutley Town Hall on October 16, 1924. And whereas the church members purchased the corner lot at Hillside Avenue and Vreeland Avenue on May 4, 1925, for a cost of $3,600. And whereas the church building cornerstone was laid on June 22, 1941, the origin of the stone is the Great Wall of the City of Refuge, Honanu Beach, District of Kona, Hawaii. Whereas for many years, Holy Trinity Lutheran Church has been actively engaged in the Nutley community, participating in the Nutley Clergy Fellowship, volunteering and providing donations for Vincent Church Care Kitchen, supporting Nutley Family Service Bureau throughout the year, and participating in Nutley Township public ceremonies. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor, that Mayor Kelly and the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declare October 16, 2024, the 100th year anniversary of Holy Trinity Lutheran Church.
Reverend, would you like to say a few words?
Church Council, Kathy Palomero. She is the president of Church Council. I also want to say a few words of thanks to Meredith for her infinite patience with us as we were learning how to coordinate this. I also want to thank the township for celebrating this with us as well. 100 years, it's a big deal. And so happy to be really a beacon of hope along with the other churches in our community. We just had our clergy fellowship meeting just yesterday. And what's nice about it is it's not just about Holy Trinity, even though tonight's our celebration for our 100th, it's really everybody, all the houses of faith and everybody in this town, working together to make it really the great place it is. As, as I think we like to say, it's a destination and a place to be here and to, and to also place roots. I mean, Holy Trinity is 100. How old is the town? It goes even beyond that. And to know that this town is vibrant, it cares about its people, its citizens, and to also make faith a part of that experience, I, I love it. That's what I love about this town, that you all take faith very seriously. And that really, that is a testimony to really making Nutley a true destination. So thank you so very much for acknowledging this. We're excited about it. We're very much, very excited about it. We've been doing different things throughout the year, and we just thank you so very much. So thank you very much to everyone and Mayor Kelly, and also Meredith for your patience. So thank you.
Reverend, would you like to do a picture? Would you like to do a picture?
Yes. It's a thank you.
Afterwards.
Right in the middle.
If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome. But if you'd like to get up and enjoy the rest of the night, go right ahead.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Reports? Commissioner Tucci?
You want to report? No, you want me to go first?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a shade tree report for September and October of 2024.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Mayor, I have various reports, 2024.
And I have the coenforcement reports for the third quarter and for September of 2024. Bills?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We bill list for November 7, 2024, Public Affairs, $609,817.47. Revenue and Finance, $8,019,542.23. Public Safety, $96,782.55. Public Works, $102,017.29. Parks and Public Property, $1,180,151.46. Water Utility, $141,384.95. Payroll as of Friday, October 25, 2024, regular, regular payroll total, $957,583.80. Overtime payroll total, $57,223.85. Total payroll, $1,014,807.65, for a grand total of $11,164,503.60.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Public comment on agenda items only? Seeing no one, Commissioner announcements? Commissioner Tucci?
The only announcement I have is that this evening was also the night that we hold our, our annual Princess Ball at the Parks Department. And we had 200 beautiful little Nutley princesses there, with some older princesses helping them along. And it was a wonderful night. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor, Commissioner, for all the support that you've given us over the years, and that we will continue.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
I have nothing either. Let's move on to ordinance introductions. I have two this evening. First is 3570, which is to purchase a replacement vehicle for Revenue and Finance in the Code Department. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 3, 2024, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
My next ordinance is 3571. This is read on behalf of the Board of Commissioners entirety. This is an ordinance that authorizes the township to execute a financial agreement with the town, Nutley Town Center Redevelopers Urban Renewal Entity, in granting a tax exemption. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage of, by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 3, 2024, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco isn't here tonight, but he does have a public hearing on a ordinance number 3563, which is entitled Vehicles and Traffic Articles for Special Zoning Areas for Handicap Parking. Would anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. 3564 is, as well, is for handicap parking. Would anyone else like to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing no one, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I have ordinance number 3565. It's an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township Penelope, Chapter 484, entitled Parking Lots Municipal, Municipal Particularly the Following Sections, Article 1, Section 8, Title Hours of Service, Parking Fees and Monthly Parking. This adjusts some of our fees for parking, especially the convenience fees and some of the parking permit fees.
Would anyone like to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing no one, move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye, move, yeah, Commissioner, move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
This is ordinance 3566, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township Penelope, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 13, Parking Meter Zones, Section 46, entitled Parking Meter Zones. They have the location set forth in, and this is changing some of our one-hour parking to two-hour parking, as some of our services are, take longer than one hour to complete. So it'll actually make two hours for all the parking of, at the parking meters on the avenue, and in certain sections.
Nice. Would anyone like to comment on this ordinance? Seeing no one, move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner, do you want to do this one, or?
Sure. This is a, a bond ordinance to improve Memorial Park, also known as the Mudhole. We received a $580,000 grant from FEMA, which we had to match with $58,000. So we will be conducting a raking program there, all right? Thereby removing as much of the organic material that, that we can, in the hope that it will help alleviate some of the flooding that we presently experience.
Yeah, Commissioner, this, if I remember correctly, we need to advance the money to get, in order to get reimbursed.
Correct. This is a reimbursement grant, Commissioner. Thank you.
All right.
Revenue and Finance guy would know that.
Yeah. Would anyone like to comment on this ordinance this evening? Seeing, seeing no one?
Move to close.
Commissioner Tucci?
Wait for close, public hearing?
Yeah, go ahead, close it.
Any second.
A second.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
No, we can't move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't move it. We don't have.
Yeah, we'll table the vote this evening. Until the next meeting. You can just go to the next meeting.
We can, we can wait. Whatever, you know?
Whatever's easier.
Whatever your pleasure is, whatever's easier. Okay. Have work.
10 a.m.
Thank you. So just for clarification, that's because it's, involves funds, and we need four votes?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Great. Thank you.
The vote is tabled until tomorrow, at 10 a.m. All right, moving on to resolutions. Commissioner Scarpelli, why don't you go? And would you mind reading Mayor Kelly's?
Me get to them.
Yeah, go ahead. You'll do the first two as well?
Sure.
I have Mayor Kelly's. I don't have mine in my packet.
I don't see the meeting.
I have them.
I don't see them either.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Resolution 31224. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 4067 23.2, and as required by law, the township has elected to provide municipal services to the Cambridge Heights at Nutley Umbrella Association in the same manner as the township provides such services on public roads and streets in the township. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Penelope and the County of Essex as follows. One, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a 2025 municipal services agreement with the association in form approved by the township attorney. Two, a copy of the resolution, as well as the municipal service agreement shall be in place on file with the clerk, and a notice of this action shall be printed once in Nutley Sun and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2024 sewer line camera inspection, cleaning, and relining were received and opened on Wednesday, September 25, 2024. Whereas Montana Construction Corp., AD Constant Avenue, Loda, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the base bid an amount of $624,350. Alternate bid number one is in the amount of $206,760, for a total bid price of $831,110. Whereas funds are available from account G04185403, an amount of $800,000, and account number G04163408, an amount of $31,110, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved now, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Montana Construction Company not to exceed $831,110, and that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a sign and sign said contract for the Township of Penelope. This is for re-lining of a sewer main, which runs along the Third River, gets a lot of infiltration, and winds up costing us money with Passaic Valley Sewerage Corp. So, and this is money that, where the majority comes from.
ARP.
ARP money.
Right.
From the feds.
Grant money.
So it's federal grant money that's used for this. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye. Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2023 acceptance of recycling vegetative waste include leaf grass clippings and wood brush were received and opened on September 28, 2022. Whereas Esprit Tunde and Sons, BO Box 1407, Southern, New Jersey, was lowest responsible bidder for the removal and recycle of Class B clean wood brush, an amount of $18.85 per cubic yard, for the removal and recycling of Class C leaves, an amount of $12.45 per cubic yard, and then removal and recycle of Class C grass clippings, an amount of $25.85 per cubic yard. Whereas Esprit Tunde was awarded an initial one-year contract term from February 7, 2023, through February 6, 2024, with an option for two one-year extensions at the same price, subject to availability of funds. And the subsequent annual municipal budget be awarded solely in the township's discretion. Whereas the first one-year contract extension was by Resolution Number 3224, for the term February 7, 2024, and ending on February 6, 2025. Whereas the term of the contract shall be extended for one final contract year, beginning February 7, 2025, through February 6, 2026, subject to the availability of funds in the subsequent annual municipal budget for the final contract extension. Whereas the funds are available from account number 501422209, for the term of February 7, 2025, through December 31, 2025, and end in the amount of $75,000, subject to the adoption of the 2025 municipal budget. Whereas the funds will be available from account number 601422209, for the term January 1, 2026, through February 6, 2026, in the amount of $5,000, subject to the adoption of the 2026 municipal budget, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to Esprit Tunde and Sons not to exceed $75,000, and the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the township. I'll remove the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
And these are Mayor Kelly's resolutions, 30924. Whereas raffle license applications have been received from the following organizations: St. Mary's Roman Catholic Church, License Number 5524, off-premises 50/50 cash raffle, License Number 5624, on-premises merchandise raffle, both to be held Saturday, December 7, 2024. Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, License Number 5724, off-premises 50/50 cash raffle, be held Sunday, July 20, 2025. St. Mary's Roman Catholic Church, License Number 5824 Bingo, License Number 5924, on-premises full tab raffles, to be held Tuesdays from January 7, 2025, to December 16, 2025. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and that the municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
The 2025 Board of Commissioner public meeting schedule be resolved in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, that the public meetings of the Board of Commissioners of Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey are held, are held the first and third Tuesday of every month. Please take notice the public meetings for the year 2025 will be held on the following dates. In the third floor commission chambers of Township Nutley Municipal Building, located at 1 Kennedy Drive, at which time formal action may be taken. Please take notice that the governing body of Township Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey, may require an executive session at any given meeting listed below. In accordance with NJSA 104-12, the governing body will adopt a resolution at an open meeting, indicating the reason for going into executive session. No action will be taken in the executive session. Please take further notice that the Board of Commissioners of Penelope may hold an end-of-the-year meeting on Wednesday, December 31, 2025, at 9 a.m. Township Penelope Municipal Building, third floor commission chambers, 1 Kennedy Drive. Formal action may be taken, and the list of the following dates. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Commissioners have unanimously agreed to continue to allow 14 holiday schedules for 2025. Whereas in 2025, the holiday schedule will continue to include one floating holiday, where township employees will have the ability to choose between either June 18th on June 20th, or Election Day on November 4, 2025. And whereas to allow sufficient time to accommodate this flexibility, all employees shall notify and obtain approval for their departments heads by April 30, 2025, as to be elected holiday. Whereas multiple requests are made for given holiday seniority rules will apply to ensure that the township shall maintain necessary service levels for our residents. Whereas holidays do not accumulate, cannot be carried forward to the subsequent year. Whereas holiday schedules are negotiated in our respective collective bargaining labor contracts, shall take precedence over holiday schedules contained therein. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Penelope, State of New Jersey, that the following holidays should be considered paid holidays, as listed below. Move the resolution.
Move it.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
The.
Commissioner, just a quick question. Alani?
Yes.
Commissioner Tucci just pointed out that the Star Ledger has released that they're going to stop publishing a paper newspaper. And it's only going to be an electronic newspaper. Will that be okay with the state if it's not a paper newspaper?
Well, we have the Nutley Sun, so as long as we have the Nutley Sun.
So we should remove that, because it's, as far as I know. So I would remove the Star Ledger?
Well, do we know if electronic is?
We don't know yet.
So why don't we leave it in both?
We could. I mean, if we, you'll only use what's, you'll only use what's authorized. So. And along with Tappin to Nutley. Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
As amended.
Yes.
2025 newspaper designation be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Penelope County, Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following newspapers are hereby designated as official newspaper for advertising for the Township Penelope for the year 2025. The Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the Herald News, be further resolved that Tappin to Nutley be and hereby is designated as the electronic news source, which notices and offices matters may be provided for under Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 1046 to 1021, the standards otherwise noted as the Sunshine Law, whether these be printed or electronic. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Believe that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci, would you like to use?
Absolutely. Thank you. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point five. And whereas requests for qualifications for Township Forester were received and opened on October twenty-third, 2024. And whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications was from the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linton, P O Box six zero eight nine, West Orange, New Jersey. And whereas the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linton, New Jersey Certified Tree Expert, number one ninety-eight, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on October twenty-third, 2024 and continued through October twenty-second, 2025. And whereas the contract is not to exceed twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars and funds are available from account four there zero one, five twelve, two hundred in the amount of six thousand and five and five there zero one, five twelve, two hundred in the amount of twenty thousand, four ninety-five and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey that a contract be awarded to the Shade Tree Department LLC, John Linton, as described herein and be further resolved that a response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution and a notice of this action be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with Local Public Contract Law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Be a resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provision of RS forty A four there's fifty-eight, the following transfer of appropriations in the 2024 Budget B and same are hereby authorized and approved from health insurance in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to Shade Tree and debris removal, other expenses and the like amount. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property, determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in programs offered. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined the need to refund families, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey that the treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs and the amounts listed below to the folks at six seventy-five Passaic Avenue and the Fund for All program in the amount of seventy-five dollars for the 2024 year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point five. And whereas Township of Nutley through Department of Parks and Recreation has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for a GP one permit for restoration. It's actually for raking of the pond in Memorial Park from the NJDEP. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for twelve months from the date of contract award. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants, P O Box three zero zero nine, Upper Montclair, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide said services for the sum not to exceed five thousand, three hundred. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year and that the contract will prohibit Veridian from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from account G there zero four, one ninety-one, four zero one in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey enter into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants as described herein and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. Be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with Local Public Contracts Law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire support and maintenance of the township of IVEA IP phone system. And whereas NJSA forty A colon eleven dash five T permits the award of contracts without bidding for the supply of any services which is a public utility subject to the jurisdiction of the BPU. And whereas a proposal from Hunter Technology seventeen zero nine, Route thirty-four, Suite three, Wall Township, New Jersey in the amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars per year will provide mandatory twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five emergency support, software maintenance and upgrade and is recommended by the Township Information Technology Administrator. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for a five-year agreement from November seventh, 2024 through November sixth, 2029. And whereas funds are available from account four there zero one, five ten, two thirty-seven and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey that the mayor and township clerk be and they are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Hunter Technologies for the township's IVEA phone system maintenance. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A dash twenty point five. And whereas the Township of Nutley through Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for architectural services for renovations to the Nutley Municipal Chambers that we're sitting in this evening and the Nutley Emergency Squad, former Nutley Emergency Squad Building, and also enlarging the garage door that's utilized by the Public Safety Department at one Cortland Street. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for twelve months from the date of contract award. And whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group, seventy-four East Passaic Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide said services for some not to exceed thirty-eight thousand. That is for all three locations. And whereas Dasa Haynes Architectural Group has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year and that the contract will prohibit Dasa Haynes from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available from contract G there zero four, one eight five, four zero two in the amount of thirty-eight thousand and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey enter into a contract with Dasa Haynes Architectural Group as described herein and be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. And be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with Local Public Contracts Law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Whereas Township of Nutley and Police Department need to acquire proprietary software for the issuance of electronic tickets through mobile computers as a non-fair and open contract. And by the way, this is Commissioner Petracco's resolution. And whereas the use of electronic ticketing increases efficiency, enables officers to return to service faster, eliminates data entry errors and auto-populates citations with the appropriate statute number, finding court information. And whereas NJSA forty A colon eleven dash five double D permits the award of contract without public bidding for the provision of proprietary software. And whereas GTBM Inc. owns the Info Cop e-ticketing system and has submitted a proposal to provide the system software. And whereas GTBM has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies it has not made any reportable contributions in the previous year and will be prohibited from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. And whereas the contract is in an amount and not expected to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, the funds for which are available in an account entitled Municipal Court E-Ticket Program, account number five there zero three, three twenty-six, two hundred. Said funds subject to the adoption of the 2025 budget and certification by the chief financial officer. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for twelve months, January one, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Nutley County of Essex that a contract be awarded to GTBM Inc. in a form approved by the township attorney and be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure be placed on file with this resolution. I move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye.
This is Commissioner Petracco's second resolution this evening. Whereas the Nutley Police Department desires to utilize police pistol range facilities of the borough of North Arlington, having its principal offices at two fourteen Ridge Road in the Hackensack Meadowlands, North Arlington, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for one year, beginning January one, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. And whereas funds are available from account number five there zero one, three zero eight, two zero nine, subject to the adoption of the 2025 municipal budget and have been certified by the chief financial officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County, Essex, State of New Jersey that the mayor and township clerk be and hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with the borough of North Arlington for use of its police pistol range for the period of January one, 2025 through December thirty-first, 2025. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. I will read my resolutions and I'll then read the remainder of Commissioner Tucci's.
Commissioner Petracco.
Excuse me. Yes, the other guy. Whereas RS fifty-four colon four sixty-seven permits the governing body of each municipality to affix the interest rate to be charged for non-payment of taxes or assessments subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of the taxes provided by law. The, whereas fifty, fifty-four colon four dash sixty-seven has been amended to permit the fixing of a said rate of eight percent per annum on the first fifteen hundred dollars of delinquency and the eighteen percent per annum on any amount in excess of fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, as follows. The tax collector is hereby authorized and directed to charge an eight percent per annum on all taxes becoming due after the due date, subject to any abavements or discounts for the late payment. We will not charge what is allowable under the ordinance at eighteen percent. We will charge the minimum allowable of eight percent. Effective January one, 2025, quarterly tax payments made by cash check or money order shall have a ten-dollar, ten-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with Section two of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date as set forth in Section one. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas big wave roofing and solar submitted and paid for a solar panel permit at twelfth Plymouth Road. The amount of the permit was three hundred and seventeen dollars and was deposited in account C oh one, nine oh four, nine oh three. They now are entitled to receive a refund of the remainder of that fee of twenty-seven, excuse me, the remainder of that fee which is comprised as follows. Whereas twenty-seven dollars DCA fee which cannot be refunded, a twenty percent plan review fee which cannot be refunded and they will receive a remaining amount of two hundred and thirty-two dollars accordingly. Be it therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex that the municipal permit of two hundred and thirty-two dollars be refunded to big wave roofing and solar. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the chief financial officer is hereby authorized and directed to solicit requests for qualifications for banking services. Be further resolved that the sealed responses for the request for qualification shall be due on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at eleven AM prevailing time addressed to the municipal clerk. Nutley Township Hall, one Kennedy Drive, at which time they will be opened and read. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. The, my next resolution is a cleanup resolution related to twenty-three appropriation reserves be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS forty A colon four dash fifty-nine, the following transfers of twenty-twenty-three appropriation reserves be in the same are hereby authorized from all of the accounts listed in the resolution to the Capital Improvement Fund OE in the amount of one million, eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. The next resolutions are for Commissioner Petracco. Counsel, his next three, they're basically all the same under the same statute for differing amounts. Can I consolidate these?
Yes, sir.
Whereas NJSA forty A colon four dash eight seven provides that the director of the Division of Local Governmental Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Whereas a said director may also approve the insertion of any item of appropriation in equal amount. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex is hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Governmental Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue into the budget for the year twenty twenty-four in the amount of sixteen-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, ninety-two cents for the National Opioid Settlement for thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars to the New Jersey, the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety pursuant to the grant. And four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents for the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Grant for, as listed for the accounts listed in Section two of each of the resolutions. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Whereas Township of Nutley wishes to install and maintain surveillance cameras and equipment on traffic signals within the right-of-way belonging to the County of Essex Res. The county requires that Nutley submit a certified copy of a resolution approved by the Board of Commissioners indicated that Nutley will hold the County of Essex harmless for any claims or actions of the law directly resulting from the installation and maintenance of said cameras and equipment. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley a memorandum of understanding with the County of Essex. Said memorandum shall be in the form attached here too or substantially similar thereto and shall have a hold harmless and indemnification provision providing for the indemnification of the County of Essex for any claims directly arising from Nutley uses of the traffic signals and their right-of-waves related to either the installation or maintenance of said equipment. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution and the executed memorandum of understanding with hold harmless and indemnification provision shall be filed with the Nutley's Municipal Clerk's Office by the Chief of Police. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. The last resolution relates to the purchase of a new hazmat vehicle. That hazmat vehicle will be paid for out of a trust account which is the hazmat trust fund which, as we provide services under hazmat, we get fees that are reimbursed. And so we're able to utilize the money in the trust to purchase equipment. So we have a need to replace the equipment. And we are doing that under the National Cooperative Purchasing Agreement that was that's available to us through the purchasing department and has been renewed by us at our, I think our October sixth meeting. The amount of the vehicle cost is three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. The funds will come out of account T fifteen, nine oh nine, nine twelve in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's been certified by the chief financial officer. The certification is attached to the resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the purchasing agent be and is hereby authorized to purchase walk-around twelve-foot, six-inch rescue Ford Commercial Chassis PLC fourteen R VIN number one FD zero W five HT five N E E four two one six zero and related accessories from New Jersey Motor, New Jersey Emergency Vehicles at twenty-two, excuse me, two thousand, two oh one Atlantic Avenue, Suite two, Manasquon, New Jersey, who's approved Sourcewell Vendors. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. That's all we have on the agenda for this evening. Would anyone wish to approach the mic this evening for public comment?
Frank. Hey Frank.
Frank.
Can you fix that for us, please?
Oh, don't say.
We need that.
I appreciate it. No, no worries. Thanks so much.
If you can just state your name for the record.
Sure. Uh, good evening. My name is Matt Whitman. I live up on Highfield Lane. Uh, moved to the town about a year and a half ago with my wife from a small town in Massachusetts uh, called Easton, where I served on the Economic Development Committee for several years. And I'm here tonight as a volunteer with a group called Voter Choice New Jersey. We've been advancing the cause of ranked choice voting in several municipalities around the state with the ultimate goal of getting the state legislature to adopt a bill that would allow um, ranked choice voting across the state. Now, the municipalities are the usual suspects, you know, Montclair, Red Bank, South Orange, Maplewood, um, but all of them have adopted resolutions in the last couple of weeks to uh, choose um, ranked choice voting for municipal and school board elections. Um, you know, it's my personal opinion that I think it allows for more diverse slate of candidates. Uh, it allows for third parties and improves people's trust in elections. Um, I don't have any action items tonight. I just wanted to come and introduce myself as a resident of the town and I'm hopeful I can, you know, work with all of you going forward and continuing to push uh, this cause, hopefully educate some people and, you know, maybe bring it up for a vote in the new year. Um, but I just wanted to stop by and introduce myself.
Thank you for your comments. Do you have something that you could provide to the municipal clerk that the board could look at?
Um, I can, I don't have a Wendy. I wasn't able to arrange the drop off, but yes, I can certainly.
You can email it to her.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I live five minutes up the road, so.
You're welcome anytime.
Yeah, anytime. Um, excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Would anyone else like to speak this evening?
Well, right.
Seeing no one. Move to close the.
We're going to, um, I'm sorry.
Close the public comment portion of the.
Move it.
Of the evening.
Second.
Commissioner uh, Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Evans.
Aye. Uh, we need a need for an executive this evening. Uh, and.
We do, Mayor, uh, Deputy Mayor, discuss uh, uh, contract.
Need a motion?
Move it. Second.
Thank you.